...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father who art in heaven, Bill our God, it's once again that we humbly come before your throne of grace to say thank you. We thank you for all the many blessings you bestowed upon the citizens of Dillon. We ask that you continuously bless our mayor, our city council, our city manager, our city attorney, and all the department heads on tonight as we're gathered together to make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. In everything we do, we pray we will be careful to give your name the glory, your name the honor, and your name the praise, but it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Welcome everybody here to City. Press always. Motion approved, the agenda.
May I bring with someone to make the motion to add Resolution 01-18, fair housing resolution? This was provided to us today, something that we do annually in April.
Are they added there in new business?
Yes, sir. New business.
We accept it in addition to the 01-18. I'll take a second. All favor. And again, I make for a motion to approve the agenda. Now that's been added. All favor. Right, make the motion to approve the minutes for the March 12, 2018 regular scheduled meeting.
Second.
All favor. I oppose. First of all, let me open by thanking everybody that came out to our first St. Patrick's Day celebration. That was March 17. I thought it went real good for the first time the city's ever had one. Weather cooperated, had a good crowd, good for a start. We had that, I think, from 11 to 3. Some of the entertainment didn't show up, especially the dancers, but I think they were from Hart's Ford. They were out of town. One of the lead dancers got the flu, so we missed that. But everything else, the DJ, the singers, just people hanging around, talking, and having something to do, especially the kids. The kids had a great time out there that day. So the mom has got her children out the house, came with the grandparents, and we had a good time, good food, too. So look forward to doing that again. It'll be up to the people that come, but it was a good start. Stuff's kind of more on the heavy side. Evans Pharmacy, those of y'all that know where that's at, they have, they've almost finished gutting that bill out. Went by there last week and they were full blast into it. So that started. I want Benny to ask, be patient on the, we're forcing people to maintenance and apparent code on that. They're doing it. I'm helping one gentleman and we're having a hard time getting the contractor.
Yes, sir.
But he's making an effort to. I know you got to do it, but just, you know, if they're in the process, just work with the owner.
Yes, sir.
I think everybody's coming in here at one time and right now it's kind of tight for them. In that, if you get a contractor that goes and signs off on that, can that contractor subcontract a little bit of that for the, to do the actual work? Is there no problem with that?
No problem, yes.
Even if it's the owner of the property?
If it's the owner of the property, it would be a problem, but the contractor can subcontract it, okay?
All right. All right. I've got one that's, we're trying to find the contractor he wants to use and having a hard time getting him, but we, they'll get him. I'm sure he's not the only one that has that right now. A lot of people need it, so. Hotel. I know that's went before and I hate, I speak to part of the county now on what they're doing. Best I can determine, they're in some sort of negotiations on what a feather in the cap of Main Street will be if that gets done. There was some, I don't know what's going on over there. I hope they do it. I think they will. I'll just reserve judgment until after I hear everything, what their, what their plans are, how they want to negotiate with that buyer for that building. I know Ernie Adams called me today about the Wiggs. I think he's president of the board of the chamber. I'm not sure exactly, but he wants to meet with me Wednesday about the chamber. If that's the case, I'm sure the city will be supportive of finding a chamber or helping, helping find a chamber along with the county on the suitable place. I have spoke with the county on that and I don't think that's going to be the problem. But, you know, you look for a spark on Main Street, and I tell you, this is a great spark. It gets kicked off. And I hope that comes to play. I talked to the president of that company that wants to come in and he's, he's still all for it. He understands municipalities and how they work, and he weren't a setback at all. I think the county wanted an appraisal, so I talked to a local fellow here to appraise that building. So hopefully he can get somewhat of an accurate appraisal and go from there. Three or four weeks ago, I got invited to go over and fly over Dillon, and it was a lot of activity downtown and around Dillon. Y'all have seen all the destruction, what's going on Harbor Creek and all that there and the new spec building and down at Port with the new road, just all the, but one of the pictures he took was Main Street and all that chamber building, that roof of that hotel was atrocious. You know, that goes all into the appraisal. I hope the county can see what the city learned. Sometimes you just don't want a problem after a while. Blessing if you can give it away. Maybe they'll come to that, too, and look at it that way also. Been talking to David a little bit about Lockton Court. It's really not just relegated to Lockton Court. I go by there a lot back and forth from my office because we're forcing two-hour parking lots. I can park in the parking lot behind the Carthor Avenue. We got a lot of trash going on at Lockton Court. Talked to Lynn a little bit about it. It's our problem, so, you know, it's not like somebody's sitting on a public bench on Main Street. We can kind of screw what we want to. I call David. I'll try to help him in some of the merchants on Main Street. I'm on the Carthor to help to force that. You just don't want people congregating there, doing all kinds of things. One practically lived there, eating there, was using the restroom there this last week. Two in there, one hollers, you know, the little convenience store in the back off behind. He said, "Bring me a bull." And it weren't kind of bull you arrived, it was a bull. You know, we just aren't going to have that. You had a local artist down there, maybe that was trying to do some paintings there. He kind of filled me in on what's going on. So just, I hope that court is going to be utilized for the theater, for pictures, for proms. You see that stuff a lot. It's just a nice place. Get it where you're kind of afraid to go back with your, and I'm not saying we have a trouble. We're just, we're just having a life.
Yeah, one that don't break them out.
Then on that point, you know, the city has talked about using, maybe finding some grant money on cameras. And maybe it's, you know, experimenting on cameras in certain locations, maybe somewhere down Main Street or whatever, but one there would be nice, too. I'm not saying we go out spend a bunch of money on cameras and split the whole entire city into surveys, but two or three, just to see how it goes, might be a good investment. Not be bad. Going forward, let me announce the Dillon County Health Initiative. They're doing a pop-up farmer's market every second Monday of the month, which is today. They start the day going through October at the South Plaza, right where we held the St. Patrick's Day, the Christmas street lighting and all that, where the water fountain is. That was a big success last year on the two or three times they did it. I don't know what went on today.
They canceled.
They canceled. Today did it well. But that's coming up. It's exactly what it says, a market, so I guess they get more in the later parts of spring and the summer, they'll have more there. They're also doing more than fresh fruits, as that's supposed to, it's a good thing to get people out. Last time I went last year, it was a bunch of people out there. That's what you want to see. I hate to say it, but it's also something we have to do. We got another building we condemned last week. It's on North Railroad Avenue. It's the old Mayor Carmichael's office, I think.
I think you're correct.
Or the ward president, or not too far along. I guess that's where HR block was.
At one time, yes, sir.
The white building beside Dillon Real. I think it connects up to Dillon Real.
Right there on the, it's right there on the alley off the railroad avenue. I believe it was Mayor Carmichael's office.
Yeah, I'm sure it's.
The Florence old office, they're rehabbing that. They're using some of the side ways, which we want to see. But that one has, as of last week, has a condemned sign on. That's why we're doing all this, hoping people fix their stuff up, so we see fewer and fewer. They haven't seen many. This is the third. In the last 12 months, we've had the other two, as you know, are being invaded as we speak.
Lynn, Hardy, myself met with officials from, some from the state, Clay King County officials on possibilities of sewer expansion, what can be done to accommodate the park, the industrial park, any things coming our way. They had a meeting at Commerce Department Columbia last week. I couldn't attend, really didn't know why I was attended. I was a part of the engineer. Lynn went, so they met. I think they're looking at some sort of putting together a plant, which you got to do first. It's kind of like a feasibility type of study. I want to say I'll let Lynn add to that if she wants to, but it's not a quick fix. We were told a new treatment plant probably goes in the area of 15 to 20 million dollars. So it was not an inexpensive endeavor, very expensive. The only thing I did learn is that the spray field, I weren't sure of that, has a, you have the ability to add a million gallons per day to capacity out there, which might be better than nothing.
If you add four million, you could add another million gallons a day. Isn't that right, Hardy?
You can expand it to a million now.
Right. You can expand to a million or an additional million?
It's already one million discharged. We can add an additional million.
Additional million, yeah. Are we at 85%? Did I hear you say that? We're at 85% now and you got, well, you got to be doing it by the time you get to 90.
We, we treat on a normal day, a little over 3 million.
A little over 3.
Anywhere from 270.
On a dry day. Thought we had 5 million.
No, that's, that's our permitted for 5 million gallons. Permitted for 5 million, but we treat about 3 million.
Well, I know, but what's our capacity?
About 60%.
Probably we're at about 85%.
Because we promised out.
Huh?
We promised out about 90% of our flood.
Well, I know, but I mean, Purdue's running, what, 1.8, 1.9?
Around 1.8.
Now, we cut their, their promise from 2.8 to 2.3.
2.3.
2.3, okay.
They gave up a half a million.
Yeah.
About four or five years.
Right.
Which is a good thing. If you want solid system, but it's just a good thing. Which, somebody brought up a point that made a, you know, I never thought, no reason for me to. With the port brings a lot of cold storage business or possibility of cold storage in the food industry, which leads to businesses that specialize in, I guess, food preparation. That's where you need to want, yeah, that's where you could get to your capacity real quick with one of those. And they say they'll definitely come calling. So you just, you know, distribution centers, I think there's no problem with that or Lyman Gordon, but you start looking at these cold stores and that's what they're going to want when they come here.
You got to be a million gallons a day out there now, right? But a million gallon passing, the pipe will carry a million gallons.
We're permitted for a million that spray.
Which, I mean, I'm talking about our sewage pipe outlet.
If it handles the 2 million, we just have to upgrade the irrigation. We can send 2 million out there.
What I'm talking about on the other side of I-95, we've got a, we've got a pipe under, how much capacity can we take from that area? For some reason, a million gallons, the flow, the pipe.
They put a larger casing in so they can expand the size of the pipe at a later date.
So a million gallons, 2 million gallons on that side, as long as we can take care of it at the.
Have to expand the pump set.
Which I think some of them were, were pleased that the infrastructure out there is in place, which I don't think some of them realize that.
Well, I'd just, I'd really like to see us look at that side of I-95 for the spray fields and take Purdue's sewage out that way instead of bringing it all the way across the county. I mean, you go from little, you accumulate that, little rock and you spray it, like, it's a lot of, a lot of transport.
I have to bring this over. Would you please follow up on that, Lynn? That's all I have.
Well, just to follow up on the comments about meeting Commerce. I did go and Hardy wasn't able to go. And we met with Department of Commerce staff, along with Rodney Berry and some folks from the county and Clay, along with PD Council Governor. What we're looking to do is apply for an EDA grant to do a comprehensive study of our whole infrastructure. And also include Trico Water in that, in that study, because they're the ones who will provide most of the water needs in these, growth of these industries. And during our discussions of an hour, there was talks about what did we see that we'd like to do. And one of them was, piggyback off your comments, Dr. Wallace, building something on the west side of I-95 to accommodate the industries there and take off what we have in town. One of the comments from the group there was, what you going to do with it? You going to spray? You going to send it to a body of water, which if we did, it'd be like 20 miles to Great P D River, which would be an expensive endeavor. But also getting into the river, if there's capacity, to get into the P D River. Then the other, you know, option would be spraying. Well, that depends on the land and how much we need to do that and how much water it can take. Right now, Hardy, if I'm not mistaken, you can spray up to two inches in certain areas.
Certain areas, yeah.
Before we can spray again, correct?
Well, once you spray, you have time to spray ratio.
So, you know, depending on weather has a lot to do with that also, and depending on the types of soil. I think we're lucky where we are now in the spray field. It's more of a sandy soil. Don't know what it's like on the west side. And then there's possibilities of doing things in our original spray field, expanding it if possible, but then you've got to look at what de-hack will allow us to, how much de-hack would then allow us to spray. Are they going to tighten that up on us? So this study that we're looking to do through EDA grant is to find all that information out and give the best possibility of where we should relocate or expand. It'll take about three to six months for us doing.
It costs about $5 a gallon, including. We can get a million gallons for about a million dollars. You don't have to buy it any cheaper than a million, you know, a million dollars for another million gallons a day. So, I mean, am I, my number's about right on what they've been telling me?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think our short-term thing, we ought to go ahead and start putting that kind of thing in the budget to, I mean, if we're at that point, I think we don't need a study to know. That just makes good sense. Let's go ahead and start putting that in the budget.
Well, what Commerce wants us to do is to find the best solution, and they're willing to pay 80 to 85% for this study. I mean, that's where you're going to get your money from down the road.
I got to pay somebody to tell me I could buy it for a dollar, but if you want to, I can buy it for $5.
I mean, that's good.
No, that's our short-term. I mean, you know, let's don't waste money on that, you know, tell us what.
So we don't want to do the EDA grant?
No, 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 no.
I mean, I'm.
I think I say do the EDA grant.
Okay.
Go ahead and look at that.
We don't, we don't need them to tell us that. We don't need to pay somebody $10,000 to tell us something stupid. You know, let's, let's let them use that money to dream bigger dreams for us. And that's what.
We dream now.
That's what the EDA grant is for.
We dream now.
It's the dreams of big dreams. But that's going to be in the process to procure that study and, like I said, it says anywhere from three to six months before that study's completed. And then that gives us time, along with the county, to say, all right, here's what we can and cannot do, where we're going to find the money, if it says we need to build a, an additional three or four million gallon facility, how we're going to pay for it. So that will be that step.
Who's going to help you get the grant?
Council Governor's doing the grant on our behalf. We sent in Thursday or Friday of last week all the information that they need from us to go ahead and start the application with it. So they'll be.
Is there a batch on that, Lynn?
Yeah, about 20%, which if it works out, it'd be ourselves, the county, and Trico will go through that much. But also NESA will throw in some money on that, too. So we don't know what our, our percentage will be at. Speaking of budgets, we're working on budgets now, and I wrote down five things that we're looking to accomplish this year, and that's what I'm assuming we're looking to accomplish. Looking for councils, guidance on that. We'll start with downtown. I'm assuming we're still going to look at doing aside grants and upfit grants that we had in the past year. We talked about storing more management, which we purchased a piece of equipment several months ago that we need to start funding along with tracking revenues for that, abandoning structure and water and sewer capabilities. So those are the five big things that we know that are going to be our goals in the coming year for our budget.
What happened to that storm drainage feed that we were?
I'll bring that to you in May. Trying to finalize that.
Is that part of next year's budget?
Yes.
As far as the budget's concerned, you going to do a couple of months in advance before it goes into effect in July?
Yeah, the first reading will be in May. That's our normal schedule.
Office is in April. Don't hurt, don't hurt you too late.
But, yeah, we'll have the first.
Did you have chief?
First reading in May with, with some numbers and the rate study for the coming year got received today on water and sewer. Looks like, you know, that we should be doing, increasing that, and it looks like about what the CPI is, about 30%. Inland Port, the mayor touched on that briefly and should have in your packet an invitation for the grand opening next Monday, the 16th, at 10:30. Did they have the RSVP, Lynn? They didn't have a deadline for that?
They didn't say.
Doesn't say, yeah. So if you're interested in attending the grand opening for the inland port, you've got a flyer in your packet where you RSVP for, you can let Lynn O'Shea RSVP for you if you plan to attend. That's all I have this month here.
Okay. PD Coalition's Detective Tyson's here. What were yours?
Patricia Manning. This is Patricia Manning. She's going to be speaking. My name is Patricia Manning, and I'm here on behalf of PD Coalition. We wanted to tell you about April being Sexual Assault Awareness Month as well as Child Abuse Awareness Month. And within the country, we know that with the, with the hashtag new to, a lot of people are coming forward with sexual assault, but we wanted to make everyone aware that also within this month, we'll be doing a march, and we're partnering with Dillon County Boys and Girls Gift Center. And the march will be April the 28th, is the last Saturday of this month, and we want everyone to come out and take, take a part in the march because it's very important. Within the PD Coalition here in Dillon, our site here in Dillon is located at, at 51 North First Avenue. And if the Dillon site, as small as we are here in Dillon, we've served more cameras in the month of January than all of Florence County, and that's just the people we're talking. Because when it comes to sexual assault, child abuse, and domestic violence, and it's a family, to me, it's a, it's a public health issue. We want to keep families safe. We want to keep people safe, and one of the best ways to do it is to educate people. We've had the opportunity to go out and speak with young people, to partner with the Boys and Girls Club, to talk with young people, to tell them about good touch, bad touch. I've had the opportunity to talk with a lot of faith-based communities because we need to let, make people aware that this is a problem. It's a public health problem, and it's a problem that's, that's very pervasive in our community. And what we need to do is educate children when they're very small about good touch, bad touch. And I think it's, it's important that we know the statistics. One, one out of two women have been assaulted in a sexual manner. One in five men have been assaulted in a sexual manner. South Carolina ranks second in the nation for domestic violence deaths. We, well, it's fifth. We used to be number two. I don't know if more people are coming forward in our state or more people are not talking in other states, but it is a public health issue. And if you want to talk about keeping families safe and keeping children safe, it starts with educating ourselves and educating people and talking, making sure that the message is out, because anything that is hidden, you can, things that are, that are covered up, they don't hide. We need to get it out. And one of the first things we want to do, a step that we are making, is to come to the march, and it'll be on the 28th. We'll start at the Coalition, and they will go, we'll have a service also at the courthouse. I'd encourage everybody to come. I'd like all of you to take your rivers and have them on display, take this information to your churches, your faith-based communities, your children. Talk to your children when they're very small. We, we need to start having conversations with children very early. When it comes to relationships, don't start when they start their dating relationships. Relationships should be with families, and they should be safe. Children need to, need to be able to talk, and they need to be able to express themselves. They need to be able to know that they're safe. We don't need to rush our children into relationships. Let them take their time. Stop asking little girls if they got a boyfriend and little boys if they have a girlfriend. Let them take their time and let them know that they're special and that they don't need to be touched. PD Coalition is a nonprofit organization, and really, it is about keeping families safe, reducing sexual assault, and preventing family violence. This is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, Child Abuse Awareness Month. October is our month for domestic violence, and we want to keep everybody safe. Just take this into consideration, and please remember, look through your packages, valuable information in it, tells about our branch Children's Center, because children are victims the least in the community. When anything, and when something is going wrong, children, it falls on children more so than anybody else because they, they can't help themselves. So we have to protect ourselves and we have to protect our children. Thank you.
I want to thank y'all. Y'all do a great job in the community. I've been with you handle a lot of services. We have Rock the Nation, and I work with you in March, and maybe we could get together and put it on the TV program on the Dillon station here.
How much money did y'all raise when you got first last year?
I think it was between $9,000 and $12,000.
Just curious.
Do y'all have a shelter, a women's shelters here in Dillon County?
Not in Dillon County. We do have one. It's a confidential location, and then we have a shelter in Wallace, which had, it used to be a safe house. It's now a transitional shelter so that when a woman has been in an abusive situation, and, you know, it takes time to get money together to rebuild, to get a house, and, you know, furnish the house and all. So we've turned that into a transitional shelter. They can stay there for up to 18 months. We have them, you know, transport them if they need a ride to and from work, but they can stay there for 18 months rent-free. Anything that they need, you know, we provide that to them. That's why, you know, we're always asking for donations and taking donations, you know, financial donations, because the financial donations help to keep the shelters running. It pays the light bills, the mortgage bill, you know, repairs, because, you know, when you've got two shelters running, it takes a lot of money to keep, you know, to keep the repairs going.
Both of the houses, I know the one that is the safe house, that is actually in the Historical Society. So anything, any repairs that we make, we have to make sure that it stays within the guidelines of the Historical Society. So, and we, each one has a playground. The one in Wallace, little girl that was, she and her mother both were killed over in Marble County, playground was actually dedicated in the little girl's memory. And they had a big gala back in October for, you know, raising money and then they had the dedication ceremony for, you know, the playground. And I want to say they raised over $25,000 on the playground to rebuild it and it's really nice. And to ride by that shelter, you would never know it's a shelter, it's in the middle of nowhere, it's in a gated facility. So, you know, the women are safe there, I've been there a few times and there's absolutely nothing there. And, but you have to have a code to get in and they do have 24 hours staff there as well. They have children's counselors as well as adult counselors there to counsel the women that have been in abusive situations. They have volunteer coordinators that, you know, also work with interns and to bring more resources in that area to help out with the shelter.
So you're partnering with the Boys and Girls Club of Dillon County?
Yeah. For the march.
For the march.
For the march, yeah.
Thank you. Playing all the decks, the guardian, that light and program, I'd like to end that off maybe to you or Jack or David who, because I really don't know much enough to comment on it enough to do it justice. I don't know what I'm supposed to say.
Well, they were supposed to be here, I didn't know if that's what it's supposed to be. Someone was supposed to be, you've got some background.
Yeah, it's a voluntary thing. Brian Mercer is head over here in Dillon County now, he's been out for about six months with a back surgery, but he was back in Cork last week. The child that comes into the Department of Social Services in Deportive Care has to have a guardian at light who just thinks in the interest of the child and not what anybody wants, what's the best interest of the child, which is whatever might be voted in. But that's what it's about.
Are there volunteers in the community that meet together?
There are volunteers.
Also, I'm not sure, remember Sally? Be involved with that.
Yeah, she had one time represented, they have an attorney. And she was a lawyer out of Florida right now, it's happening. And they do a good job. Dee Dee Daniels used to do it here in Dillon County, was head up. It's a very needed, needed job.
Then we could catch them here in the next, that council meeting or whatever.
Yeah, they had requests to be on the agenda. Before you get to Citizen Report, I did skip a very important portion of mine. Chief Dave Lane would like to introduce one of our newest police officers.
Today we have Lance Corporal Ricky Day. He comes to us with a lot of experience, he worked for the detention center here in Dillon for about three years and he has been a police officer for about six years. Very fortunate to have him, we're glad that he has chose to come on over and we're excited about his career here, so please welcome him to the city of Dillon.
Ricky, where'd you come from?
My original hometown.
You said you had six years of service, where?
I was a first sergeant with the Dillon County Sheriff's Office.
Dillon County Sheriff's?
Yeah.
Glad to have you on board.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Citizen Report, anything anybody want to bring our attention out of the office at this time? With none unfinished business, okay, we're going to open unfinished business up with the twin lease agreement and the golf course. Glenn, I'll let you open that.
As I stated in my letter to the council, I submitted the lease agreement that was discussed last month to Mr. Robert Johnson to have him sign it. Instead of signing it, he sent back, and I gave you a copy of the email, what he would like to add to what we talked about last month. Which was, he wanted to add, the city has the option to purchase the property without a price being listed. The original agreement had $850,000 that we wanted to purchase. He wanted to add a clause stating that the city will clean up the 28 acres along the course and the railroad tracks. And that is acreage that's been used prior to us and probably for the last 40-plus years, Burke?
Yes, sir.
To put debris off of, to locate debris that comes off the golf course such as fallen tree limbs, pine cones, pine straw. After hurricane, we had some things that we put over there, so there's some things there that's on that property that's not being used at this time. And then the third was a clause stating that the city will move the green from Country Club Road, which is actual number 12 green, so that a road from the clubhouse driveway could be built to run over to this 28 acres that runs along the railroad tracks. Which I don't think that was, none of this was discussed originally a month ago. So I bring back to council, how do you want to handle that?
That's a substantial difference in the lease that we're under that, I mean, it changes the thing completely. Except amongst the paper.
The cost to move the screen was at our expense?
That's the way I read it. A call stating that the city will move the green.
They got that road right after that bridge.
Highway Department won't let them do that.
What are they saying they needs to do?
He can't encroach from that period because of the curb and the bridge and the railroad track here. That was his plan. And he started on it and the Highway Department stopped that several years ago.
Well, we struggling, we need to hold the golf course financially, we need to have anyway. Even if we weren't the ones to pay for it, would really be a stickler with interrupting play and everything else. I just personally, that's a tough pill to swallow. And I know all of us, I know Johnny didn't, that's fine, that's his pill. But the rest of us, you know, Miss Manning and, oh, you could lie about it, but they, I think they understood the importance of the community and we up here did. And that's how we, that's how we voted on it, the way we voted on it. But that's a lot to swallow.
What's the significance of it on the new lease not having a price on it?
Well, look, Jack, we had...
Well, I mean, under the old lease, we had a price in it if we could buy it for it. And if you take that price out, then you know it ain't going to go down.
Why don't we put in a phrase that's in fact, how do you know that we're in line? You know, we're working, how do you know it's not going to go down?
Well, we don't. We don't. I think he's, you know, maybe a negotiation tag that you could... I could speak for myself that that's...
Why wasn't it brought up a region?
Huh?
Why wasn't it brought up a region?
I mean, that's not doable from my standpoint. I mean, that's just too much to put on the seat. Maybe that's why he put it even, I can't speak for him, you know, but y'all chiming. That's just a lot to do. I don't know what a green costs, if it's 50,000 or 100,000, I mean, it's a lot.
And the destruction of play also, you're looking at at least what David said, eight to 10 weeks on getting mature enough to play on once. It's prudent. So you're looking at probably closing down number 12 for six months.
What was he reading for right now, like this, this town?
I'm sorry?
What is reading?
He wants to be able to get to that 28 acres, he thinks he can sell lots of that road.
What are you going to do, 28 acres? And so the city got paid to get him back that green?
Well, he wants us to move the green. And, you know, I don't know what other part of the course that this road, two of the roads going through, you mean, they've got 13 and 14, you got other parts too.
It would definitely mess up. Douglas and I rode out there late last week because he wanted to see what he was talking about and we was trying to envision, but we don't know.
I would leave it open, but I think from my standpoint, the council will agree, but I think that's, I think we have to reject that from, that's my view, I mean, that's what I would recommend.
Well, I thought that we...
You made a motion?
Provided a lease that he agreed to a month ago, two months ago, that y'all voted on last month to go forward.
Well, I think we would like to stick to that original lease agreement.
I agree.
I agree. Well, can I have a motion to that?
Can we have some more discussion when we build time?
If you want to add, I don't know what to add.
Well, the only thing I want to add is, is that we went ahead, well, I don't know who Mr. Carter is, is he a golf course member, Mr. Carter? Do y'all know, Dr. Wallace?
Mr. Carter, Catfish.
I don't know who he is. But the thing about it is, is he went and he did a negotiation, I guess for the city of Dillon.
Well, what we did was, he was close to Robert and it was an effort to try to get him to come down on the cost.
But wouldn't it been more responsible to come before the governing body right here had talked to us? That way we would have eliminated everything, what we're going through now? Because we had, we got a motion and you made a second and it was all in favor. And now he's came back with a counter offer. And, just a second, hold on a second, but hold on. And Mr. Brady said it wasn't in taxpayers' dollars. Now, if we go to clean off these 28 acres of land, that's going to be taxpayer's dollars.
We're not going to.
Okay, so how much timeframe are we going to give Mr. Johnson to come back and tell this council what he wants in the agreement? Are we going to wait a whole nother month? Because Mr. Brady wouldn't allow the people, the citizens of Dillon, to come in here and vote their opinion on how they felt about it. And I asked him honestly, but he wouldn't allow me to do that. So, I mean, how fair is it? Shouldn't the council make a decision tonight if they want to go forward or get out the golf course altogether? I mean, your recommendation, hold on a second, Jackson. Your recommendation is we don't go forward, is correct, Glenn?
In my letter, my recommendation was not to agree to terms that he gave. The additional.
So we're going to give him an additional another month and this council...
We giving him a vote?
Well, hold on, but let me finish saying what I kind of say, Dr. Wallace. I will be a part of the meeting. Now, Dr. Wallace and I guess Todd and Mr. Brady will all talk to Mr. Johnson or Mr. Mason and then you'll come back to council and then you'll tell us what's been transpired. I would like Mr. Johnson to come before this council and talk to us about this lease agreement.
But he won't, if he wants to, that's fine.
Well, my boy, it's his golf course. We gave him hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, shouldn't he come and represent himself and tell us how he feels about what the police?
I think, let me cut it. Now, I think what we're going to do going here is go back to the original agreement and if he doesn't want to do it, he doesn't want to do it in his own...
So you're telling, we're going to get out the golf course if he's not ready to renegotiate this?
We aren't going to do that.
Yeah, that's all I need to hear.
So, right. If he doesn't agree to sign this, the original one that we can't afford to put, to boot back in and shut down and basically ruin the course, you know, I mean, what's left of it?
He wants to come back and agree to it, then we'll still go forward with our original.
What I presented to him, the original, which was add additional two years and keep the price the same at $2,500.
Under the same terms of leasing, that's where I prepared, that's what we sent to him.
We just can't afford to do what he's asked us to do. I agree. I agree. So you had a motion.
We got second.
Well, we got a motion.
To stay with our original agreement of $2,500 in two years. Why don't we vote on that?
Well, aren't we voting on to turn down this council?
Well, okay, yeah. It would be the same thing, but yeah.
It would be the same thing.
Might be nicer to say we're going to stick with our original agreement. I make the motion we stick to our original agreement.
I say, all in favor?
I oppose.
I oppose.
You want to do the decision?
Glenn, talk to the bids on the Dillon County Council.
Counsel, Agent Bill, we talked about it last month also, since it was also on the agenda, we got, and it's on the agenda this month. There were three bids, GBI contract, we had the lowest bid of $29,892. Hayes Home Improvement had $31,158, seven cents bid. And Allstate Construction had $32,353.23. And this was to replace windows across the front of the building, painting and pressure washing the front of the building, removing an awning on front of the building, installing a new awning on front of the building. And stucco and repair of the front of the building along with replacement of a door on the entrance of the building.
All right, I think y'all seen the bids, they were on the last report last month. We had a motion accept the lowest bid, but we're not...
I oppose.
New business owners, 1801, the Benz only map for 204 North First Avenue owned by James J. Davis from a R5 to a B2, which has been recommended by the... Make the motion. All in favor?
I oppose.
Motion carries, ordinance 02 to allow sidewalk sales within the downtown commercial historic overlay district we have discussed.
Make the motion.
All in favor?
I oppose.
Motion carries, in ordinance of 1803, amend duty of documents to keep adjacent sidewalks free from destruction, stands and boxes on streets and sidewalks, which had been discussed.
Make the motion.
All in favor?
I oppose.
Some of that could create a problem, safety area. No, and in that ordinance, I think there's stipulations that Jack and Benny came up with, they signed a release form, they can't be no more than two and a half feet off the front of their building. And if it becomes a problem, you got to address it.
And lastly, the added resolution 0118 about their housing resolution. Make the motion.
Right.
All in favor?
I oppose.
Counsel, never abort.
Glenn, I want to go back to the golf course just a second. What kind of, are we going to wait a whole nother month to not make sure?
No, I'll let you know tomorrow if he's not going to sign it, I will let council know. And I'll also let you know once he signs it. May 30. It expires. But I will let you know as soon as I know. As soon as he signs it.
The aside grant, how much money do we got for this current year?
We're at zero right this month.
So we don't have any money?
Don't have any left to do new ones with. Now, we could possibly, if everybody turned their stuff in tomorrow and did not spend what they, what we gave them or committed to them, we would have some left, but right now, zeros out there.
So you're asking, in the new fuzzy year, are we going to do, we done the 24,000, Todd? Are we just going to have 12,000 there?
Well, I'm going to try to do 24 again.
24,000?
I'm going to try to do what we did this past year. Depending on if there's revenue to support it.
David, the JAG grant, I've asked you a couple of months ago, a month ago, is any way on the JAG grant?
It's been submitted, we're just waiting to hear if we have the benefit of the frame of funds.
Do our police officers have the authority to reduce a ticket or does the person have to come to court? I had some people ask me, they got a speeding ticket and they had to miss work. And they were trying to figure out, does the city police officers have the authority to reduce the ticket so they don't have to miss work or do they have to come to court?
They need to come to court.
They got to come to court. The grant we got for the lift stations? The grant we got for the lift stations, how, how's that coming on? How are the lift stations?
We're still working on that. There's been some ties with commerce. We've got to relocate the lift station here by the National Guard Army about 10 feet. And Jack wrote a letter last week.
I wrote a letter about three weeks ago, and told the lady what I thought she wanted to hear, and I used, they wanted to know why I'd move that one, and why to use an easement rather than purchase the property, and that is an easement that's consistent with what else, of the way the other lift stations are. And the word, and I said, said, that's consistent with the rest of the sewer system. She said that was too broad. She went back Thursday and changed it to consistent with the lift stations. And I said it to her, hadn't heard of it from her.
So we're still moving forward on those two lift stations?
Yes, okay. The handicap assessments were the city county complex here. Where were you at with that? Is that?
That's done.
Everybody situated with that?
There's the two back doors, and if you look out here, by that, you see a big old silver button that automatically opens up the doors.
Oh, another thing, I, I won't say anything like that, but I think that's the thing we're talking about.
I did what we talked about, Martin Luther King there, is any sign with the one at Dillon yet? I want you to quit.
That's on the round property? Yeah, we need to do something there.
Look at them tomorrow.
We really do need to do something.
You had to do it. You started sending out the non-cuts yet?
Yes, sir.
That's all right.
Don't forget to celebrate Main Street in the April, before Big and Big. The car show's been, things have been getting better, better every year. I enjoy going. Y'all have gone and gone. It's a good time. Also, you know, I, I'll say, contacted Jacob Richardson's mother. Better know, we're still thinking about him. He's gone through multiple surgeries, policeman that fought in that horrific crash out on Highway 9. What was that, probably three years ago now, four?
Four years ago.
Four years ago. Worst day is mayor, when I learned that, and he's come a long way. Maybe they'll get a little closure out of that. I think that trial on that person that.
She pled guilty today and got 15 years.
Guilty today, and really devastated a lot of lives, kids and a couple more. A lot of people about to keep that family and those others, that, in your prayers, and what DUI could do for them, just to test again, drive, and what the consequences are.
You know, last, last council meeting, Mr. Eller accused us of turning our back on children. You know, I've, I've really kind of, kind of gotten me, you know, and that kind of, you know, Johnny Grant is a bad person, he won't let everybody vote, and I thought they voted for us, so we would vote, just, oh. But now, Johnny, I want to say to you, they're going, $12,000 a year for domestic abuse. I think right now, we've raised about $27,000 for Red Cross victims, for houses that are burned. You turning your back on me, because we won't raise that money next year if we don't have that golf course. See, you know, I mean, I'm not, I mean, I'm not saying it's, it's good business, I'm not saying any of that, but if we're going to look at who we're turning our back on, you know, I, you know, playing in a park is very, very nice, and I think we ought to provide nice parks for our children. Turning our back on abused people, people burned out of their houses, I don't think we ought to sleep at night if we don't do something for them.
Well, I think it's unfair.
You put that on your heart. I'm talking, I'm talking.
Hold on now.
No, 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 but I'm talking.
You always come my way first, Todd.
Well, let's let him finish his topic. I'll, I'll tell you. Go ahead and talk.
Now, I just want to tell you, the Boys and Girls Club, and Mr. Smear, the Miss Bill, they came in here many times, and they've asked for a donation. We haven't given them a thing, and they're partnering with them. So I think it's unfair that you would come directly at me like that, Dr. Wallace, because when you throw a billion dollars away in a golf course that only serves to 1%, I think it's unfair that 99's got to suffer.
All right, so, anything else?
Done.
Good.
All right, I have a motion due adjournance.